Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll call to order the Human Services Committee. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. The chair will entertain a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Snell, Commissioner Williams. Any questions with respect to the agenda? All those who are in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Public comment is now open. Public comment now for three minutes. Is there public comment? Is there public comment? Last call for public comment. Public comment is now closed. Next item is committee member items. The first thing is approval of last month's minutes. The chair will entertain a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Snell and Commissioner Baer. Any question with respect to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Onto appointments. We still have our two vacancies on the sanitary code Board of Appeals. I did speak with a contractor this past month, who said he might be interested and that he had a friend who was a well driller. However, neither of those persons have submitted applications. Moving on to the, I'm sorry, are there any nominations from the floor? Commissioner Williams?
I have no nomination, but I did want to just let you know I have talked to a contractor who's also interested in applying.
Very good. Need to, need to get somebody in there who can do it. Thank you. Moving on to the Department on Aging Advisory Council, there is a public seat which is currently vacant. We have had an applicant, Shanice Davenport. Chair will entertain nominations. Shanice Davenport is nominated. Are there any further applicants or any further nominations from the floor? All those in favor of Shanice Davenport will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please note that?
It's been noted.
Now on to Medical Care Facilities Financial Report. Not seeing anyone here from the medical care facility. Do members have any comments or questions with respect to the report? Thank you, Commissioner Snell and Commissioner Williams for support. Any further questions with respect to the medical care facility financial report? Commissioner Baer?
Why is no one here to present this report?
I'll refer that to management.
I do not know, actually. They normally are.
I can speak to that briefly. Typically, and this has been what they do, what they've done since I've been here for eight years, they provide us financial reports every month. However, they have a quarterly report. So on a monthly basis, they do their financials. On a quarterly basis, someone shows up and does a report and updates us on the happenings of the medical care facility. So I think this is common practice that she shows up every quarter.
Thank you. Any further questions, Commissioner Baer? Thank you. Okay, there's motion and support on the floor. All those in favor of receiving the report will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Now on to Lifeway Semiannual Report and Year End Financials and Director, Mary Beth Leonard is here. Welcome.
Good morning, everybody. So I will, to start off first, I will point out relative to the year end financials, you would have received that. There would have been three documents relative to year end that was sent in June. We do that on an annual basis per requirement in the mental health code. The two documents, one document is our compliance report relative to the audit, basically indicating in a review of ensuring that we're in compliance with areas relative to reporting to the state. So that's the compliance proportion of the audit. The other two, the single audit, is because we are now required, because we receive a SAMSA grant that is over $500,000. It does require a single audit. So you'll see that included in your report as well as our annual audit year end for fiscal year 23. I did, we do not typically present on that report. We usually send it on to all of you and if there were any questions.
Questions on the financial report? I will, I will note that we've been having discussions at Lifeways with respect to its pension plan, which is, it has a pension defined benefit pension, just as the county does. And with the growing payroll and the aging of the population, those contributions have increased substantially over the past few years. We're continuing to look closely at that at Lifeways and will continue to. And so are you going to continue?
Yeah, I find my, all right. Included also in your packet for this month is the quarterly report. A couple of things that I'd like to highlight. First, we did apply and we were accepted for the National Health Services Corps. That is to indicate that for both Jackson and Hillsdale County, we are an underserved relative to staffing, or specifically around the clinical staff. And the benefit for having that designation is that staff are then eligible, for those that qualify, are eligible to apply for student loan forgiveness and that kind of thing. So it's really a great thing. We talk about some of the challenges relative to recruitment and hiring. So we were happy to be accepted with that designation. The other thing that I wanted to share is we constantly look at ways that we can diversify our funding. And one of the things that we had as a strategic goal of the organization was when we put into play our crisis residential unit that I've talked with you about, where people can stay up to 14 days, really to have an opportunity to diversify the funding for that program. And we are happy to report that we've been able to secure contracts with Summit Points Community Mental Health, with Lenaway Community Mental Health, and also with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. So that will allow us to be able to expand the population that we serve as well as being able to have additional revenue to cover the costs for that service for our community. The other thing that you see in your packet is around the assisted outpatient treatment. We did apply for two grants. We applied for a federal grant through SAMSA, and we also applied for a state grant. This would allow us to be able to partner with the courts around individuals that have AOTs and to be able to coordinate care for those individuals. Now, we did receive notice that we got the department's grant, but we learned last week that we were not selected. Only two organizations in the state of Michigan were selected for the federal grant. We'll continue to advocate and resubmit should that funding open up in the future. The other thing I wanted to also point out included in your packet is around our partnership. We continue to expand around crisis intervention team model. It's a model and partnership with law enforcement as to how you respond to individuals in the community who might have a mental health issue or struggle and also have interaction with law enforcement. And we're happy about the fact that we've been able to move the needle with the city, Jackson City Police, and actually embed into their department a CIT-trained clinician who goes with law enforcement out into the community for individuals who are struggling. And it has, it's very well received and very excited about that advancement for our community and continue to look for opportunities to expand that as we move forward. The other major probably challenge that we are experiencing across the state of Michigan is around the Medicaid revenue gap. As I've shared before, once we started to see that the public health emergency ended and the Medicaid eligibles would start to decline in the state of Michigan, our revenue would start to decline as a result of that. The challenge around that is that we've not seen a decrease in individuals accessing services or needing behavioral health, substance use services, or services for the intellectually developmentally disabled. We've actually seen an 18% increase in individuals. So we've been doing advocacy as a statewide system. They're projecting a $93 million deficit. And within our region, we are projecting a $26 million deficit. The good news is that as a region, we do have a fully funded ISF that will help address that deficit for this year. And we, as part of that advocacy, the state did implement a fiscal year 24 rate adjustment, which will be about $8 million for our region, so that will bring that deficit down and reduce the amount of revenue we have to take out of the ISF. But we, we will continue if the state doesn't do some actuarial analysis and rate adjustments for fiscal year 25, there will still continue to be a deficit moving into 25.
And this is related to the letter that each of us received from Lifeways. Commissioner Baer brought it to my attention. He was curious about it. So the, the revenue issue is what was in that, was in that letter that we saw last week, Tony. So that's, so there's been some, a little bit of relief from the issue, but not completely to Mish, to the PIHPs or Lifeway satisfaction.
That's correct. We are, we do have, we just presented a balanced budget to our board here in, oh, September. It's already October, here in September, knowing that mid-state is going to have to have a settlement to to address the deficit that many of the CMHs are experiencing within our region. But we will continue to advocate. I think the biggest thing for county commissioners to know is that there has been some adjustments and will continue to advocate for additional revenue to cover what's actually occurring in the field.
Can you tell us status briefly of the Hillsdale facility plan?
Yes, so we are continuing to work on the fact that in Hillsdale, we currently lease the space from the county. We've been evaluating the need to expand services in Hillsdale, not at the same level in Jackson, but obviously we need to put into play a crisis continuum in Hillsdale and expand the ability for people to access care as a result of becoming a certified community behavioral health clinic. The county has made the decision that they are going to utilize our building for the courts in '26. So we kind of pushes the need for us as an organization to evaluate, which we've been doing for the past two years now, looking at lease options, purchase options, renovation costs associated with those options, and the option of potential new build. Lifeway's board has moved in the direction to look at a new build. We have secured with intent to purchase, if all the due diligence comes to fruition, which I believe it will, a piece of property in Hillsdale. And then we will be looking to take to our facilities committee and our finance committee this month, approval to support going to the county for support of a bond for the build. Should that not come to fruition relative to support of the county for a bond, we would then have to take the next step relative to a commercial loan for the project. But we have until the fall of 2026 to move out of our current location.
Okay, questions for Lifeways, please? Questions? Hearing none, chair will entertain a motion to receive the Lifeway's financial report and the periodic report from the director. Thank you, Commissioner Baer and Commissioner Willis. Any further questions? All those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mary Beth.
Yep, thank you.
I am informed, reliably informed, that Board Docs has crashed. And so... I'm so far, so far, medical care. Hope that's the Lifeways report. Wait a minute, we don't want that. I've still got an agenda in front of me. Oh, but it's not giving me anything new with respect to the medical care facility bond interest payment. That is the next thing. Whoops, here it comes. Now it's coming up. Cecilia, come on forward while we struggle with this.
All right, so, so yes, so this is something we do every year as a resolution for the Jackson County Medical Care Facility to transfer money from their MOE funds in order to make their interest payment on their bond.
And this is done as a matter of course each year, is it not?
Yes.
Okay. Questions for Cecilia with respect to this? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the staff recommendation. Thank you, Commissioner Snell and Commissioner Williams. Any further questions? All those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I've, I've got it. I'm working. You're kind of important. You want me to give you, you want me to give you a couple of minutes? Well, the clerk is having trouble with his. We're going to stand the D's for just a minute while the clerk gets his thing back up. Okay, we will be back in order. We'll be back in order. We'll move on to the Department on Aging request for a vehicle. Hi Danielle, good to see you.
Good afternoon. I brought forward a request to purchase a new Meals on Wheels van. This is actually funding that was received from the Friends of Jackson Seniors. It's part of the Supeson funding that they raised in 2024. And they also received some additional donations. So what they did at their last board meeting was put forth a motion to purchase a new vehicle for 42, up to $42,000 for the Meals on Wheels program.
Very good. Commissioner Baer, did you say you had a question on this?
Yes, sir.
Please, go ahead.
I see in your letter here that this vehicle has only 75,240 miles on it. To me, that's a very low mileage vehicle. My pickup is five years older than this vehicle and it's got over 240,000 on it. It's running fine. What happens if this vehicle gets worn out in such low mileage?
What we looked at is last year when we did a vehicle replacement, we actually had three 2014 vans. So we replaced the 2014 as well as last year. So we have two 2014, which are our oldest vehicles in the fleet. With those vans, this particular one that we're getting rid of, the one that we're continuing to maintain has a little bit more in miles, but we just put a new transmission into it either last year or the year before. So we're continuing to hold that vehicle. In relation to that, so in the last vehicles that we've replaced, the 2014s have lost their transmission and had to have that big repair on them. So that expense is around like $7,000 to $8,000. So I anticipate projecting that this vehicle, which is the last one of our 2014s to not to have a transmission replaced, could possibly need one. And that would be a big expense based on the other repairs that have been done for that vehicle. So this vehicle is the oldest one in the fleet.
Okay, second question. I see again the senior, the Friends of Jackson Seniors have donated $39,967 to purchase us. That's a, it's a very good organization we have here. So the vehicle cost is $39,927. Your request in the text is for forty-some thousand?
The request is for the actual vehicle for the 2014, which is a $39,967. The Friends of Board knows that there could be a change in this, so the quote that when I submitted the report has a $2,000 rebate tied to that. If that rebate were to expire before I could bring it forward to the board, they decided to increase the amount that they would allow for, like to donate for a purchase, just in case that rebate is not there. So currently we were checking with facilities and then they're checking with LaFontaine to make sure that that rebate is still in place. If that rebate were to disappear or not be available, they have awarded additional dollars in case it's not there. So they want to cover the full cost of the vehicle.
Okay, thank you for that.
Commissioner Williams, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a, it's very small question here. I'm very much a local shop kind of guy. And so I was just curious, was there, did you by chance look in the greater Jackson area to see if there was anything that would fit your budget restraint?
We look at the My Deal program, which is a state program to get the best deal for the award. And this was the route that we went, is using the My Deal program, the state program.
Okay, nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the staff recommendation.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Baer and Commissioner Williams. Any further questions? All those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And I believe your report is up next then. Is that right, Danielle?
It is, thank you. And thank you for moving forward that motion to purchase the vehicle. And I'll let the Friends of Jackson Seniors know and work with facilities on proceeding with that. And again, it was about a year ago that we purchased that vehicle. So it's very nice of the Friends of Jackson Seniors to again be able to donate close to $40,000 each of the last two years. So we're very thankful for them to be able to do that. One of the items I had on my report was our Wellwise Grant Award. And there's an attachment for that so that you could view kind of like our last statement of contract award that we have received at this point. Just to highlight a few things with our funding around the grants, previously I'd mentioned at this meeting that we were looking to move some federal dollars from congregate meals down to home-delivered meals. And you can kind of see that on the statement of contract award, that $131,000 in federal funds were moved from one program to the other. The other part that's really good to work with Wellwise, Wellwise on, Wellwise Services, is that if we have a request that comes that we're not spending funding related to like our counseling program, you can see there's actual deduction there of like $7,000. As long as it is the same funding source, it can be, can be moved to other program areas. And so we were able to move like the $7,183 into three different other programs that had already been spending their funding and could use some additional award. One of those was areas was the Senior Center. So you can see that there was an increase in the amount of funding there. There was an increase to the caregiver supplemental program as well as our caregiver education program. So it's very nice that Wellwise is able to do that and shift those dollars to the program areas where we can spend it. We're also working on our staff training. That'll be in a few weeks. It's actually on October 24th. We do try to get our departmental staff together. We do try to get our departmental staff together once a year where we can all come together, kind of reflect on our mission, talk about the programs that we've been doing, but also to focus on a training topic. And this year, it's on implicit bias. We have Stephanie Lang, who's done some trainings at the state level, that's going to be able to come down and do this presentation for us. The reason that we focused on that topic is one of the things that the state is looking at our contracts that we do with Wellwise Services is focusing on DEI work, and this will help to capture that for all of our employees, to make sure everybody's getting some good education around that area. So we're pretty excited. It definitely is a good time to get everybody together. There's so many staff that we have that don't normally get to see, like the cooks, for example, that work at five in the morning, and you have other staff that, you know, they might not be in the office until four. So being everybody, getting everybody together, reflecting back on the work that we've done, remember our purpose, and have a great training. So we're pretty excited about that. With our Supes on for 2025, as we're planning that, I just wanted to highlight that the Friends of Jackson Seniors was able to be drawn for what they call a certificate called the Tower Tour. That's something for the Mackinac Bridge. So if somebody's shaking their head, they're, yes, they're familiar with it. Well, we're pretty excited about it. This certificate, they've been trying since 2016 to receive this certificate. So they, the Bridge Authority draws 25 nonprofits each year. They actually, it was surprising that Jackson actually has two certificates. So in looking back to see the different organizations that have received them, this year it was the Tompkins Center Historical Society had received a certificate, and they just did their drawing in September, and they received about $3,000 for that Tower Tour. So people do come from out of state and try to do, participate in live auctions, silent auctions to win this kind of award. And it's pretty interesting because you're able to go up to, into the tower in an elevator. You have to be able to climb the last 40 feet by ladder, and you pop up through a hole, and you get to see the 360-degree view on top of one of the towers. So they have about 50 people a year that actually are able to go through using the Tower Tour certificates. The other people that get to go up are usually VIPs, so it's a pretty prominent thing. We're really excited to be able to bring this to the silent auction that they're going to do with the Friends, with the Friends of Jackson Seniors. It'll be in March. So the elevator that they ride up in is very small. It was built in 1957. It's the original elevator. So it's a really neat opportunity. It lasts about an hour. On top, you get about 15 minutes up there. There's a little bit of leeway to give you, but usually it lasts about an hour. So the Tower Tour certificate is good for two people. There's a few like height things and I think, don't be claustrophobic, you know, stuff like that. So, so more to come as we move forward with that. And I also wanted to highlight a few pictures at the bottom of the report. I always talk about our Senior Center activities and our enrichment coordinator, and she does such a fabulous job in trying to coordinate all the things that are going on and get people to engage with us. So at the very bottom, you'll see some pictures from our Senior Safety Seminar that we did in September. Then we also worked on a fall prevention program with Wellwise Services, and they had a really good response, a lot of new faces for that. The other one, you'll see like an outside picture. We really like to use the space that's outside the multipurpose room, so it's like a garden area out there. The Master Gardeners did a class on when you go to the grocery store and you buy a bouquet of flowers, and you wonder, oh, gosh, how do I put this together? So it was like working with things that you would buy at the grocery store and how to put those together and into an arrangement, and all the participants walked away with something. So that was a very nice experience. And the last picture is of a dance that we did in, be in August, actually. But our most recent dance, which was last week, they had 114 people dine with us, and then we had about 120 people actually at the dance. So again, putting good space, or good use of the space that we have at the Human Service Building even for evening events. And that's all I have for my report.
Questions for Danielle? The Chair will entertain a motion to receive the report. Thank you, Commissioner Bear and Commissioner Williams. The Tower Tour, if you can auction that off, that's, that's very cool. I never did it myself, but I heard all about it, and it's a one, it's a bucket list thing. Yeah. All those in favor of receiving the report will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you.
And now the Health Department. Good to see you, Kristin.
Hello, good afternoon. First, I just wanted to say a quick thank you to, for all the items that were passed last month with Holly here. That was kind of the end of our, well, that was the end of our fiscal year, so we needed to get those items in. And here we start in October with the beginning of our fiscal year and all of our grants and really starting afresh. And I just want to say a couple of words about that. I've been here for three years. Our leadership team has really come together to really set some standards high and no longer just looking at, you know, as we've come out of COVID and really got into our programs and really looking to how we can, you know, set that bar high and not just meet the minimum program requirements. One thing I can tell you is that all of our grants, you know, I think we've mentioned it before, have minimum program requirements that they have to do, but we want to, you know, not only meet those requirements but exceed them. Next month, when I come in here, we will be in the midst of our first state accreditation since COVID. It's been since 2019 since we had a full Health Department state accreditation. So this is many of our staff, including almost all of our leadership staff, well, all of us that are in leadership at the Health Department, it will be new to us. We have some managers that have gone through it before, so, but we're really relying on a team effort to, to go through this accreditation. It is, you know, hopefully the next time I come in here, well, I guess in December would be, I'll have some good, you know, information to say it is a technical assistance year for our state accreditation, so we won't have any corrective action plans. It's really just to work with us to see where we're doing. With that said though, I still want our, you know, our bar to be high that we're, you know, achieving to, to meet that. So going into the report, community health education and promotion, that is one area definitely that we are really trying to, to bump up and, and push our standards high. We are in the community. A few months ago, you passed the Outreach Coordinator. We have a whole slide of all of the outreach activities, and we are really pushing to be everywhere in the community right now. There's places that we've been that we said, hmm, probably not the best place for the Health Department to be. One was a Friday night that I was at the Falls at the Fall of Palooza or something this summer, and it just wasn't the right audience. No one was really interested in talking about the Health Department or services there. But, you know, our goal is with those kind of unsuccessful areas is to learn from them and grow and find out where we really should be and where the Health Department, you know, can meet the needs of our community. So you'll see that list of outreach education. One thing I'll be bringing, just to forewarn you, it's on our kindergarten oral health assessment, that COHA program is still growing. We were one of the first in the state to bring that to our county. It is going to be a requirement for all counties in the state, but they're not all there yet. So they're still working on state funding formulas for that. So although we passed our budget for fiscal year 2025, I will probably be coming forward with a request to accept additional funding because they're, they're planning to give us more, but it wasn't ready at funding or at the fiscal year planning cycle. So we go on to personal preventative health services. I will note that pertussis is something that you will hear in the community. I think a couple of months ago, we were talking about measles. Pertussis is coming. I just got an email this morning that we have one positive case in the, in the county of pertussis that is immunization, or you can be immunized for pertussis, but it wanes over time, we are learning. So some of our students are, around the state have been coming down with pertussis. So we will have to exclude them from school for that duration, and then I believe they'll be re-immunized and, and move forward. But until they're, while they're having, it's whooping cough, so there's, while they're, you know, coughing and their disease is present, then we will exclude them from school. Really positive thing to talk about in the personal and preventative health services is one of our communicable disease nurses was recognized as one of the healthcare angels for Jackson Magazine. So she got to go, gets some photos taken. There's a really, really nice article on her in the, I believe it was the August or September, September, Jackson Magazine, and her name is Tracy Payne. There's the quote in there from her supervisor, but she has been with the county for quite a while with the Health Department, and, you know, we really value her expertise and her, her knowledge in the communicable disease area. So if you have a chance, I would take a look at that magazine. I'm pretty sure, like I said, it was September, and, and there's, you know, some nice words in there about her. Moving on to WIC, one thing to note about WIC, WIC does not participate in the same accreditation process we do. They have what's called, they have their own, and they just had that evaluation just a few weeks ago. They did receive 100% on that evaluation. That evaluation is done every two years, and this is the first time in our known history from our staff and people who have been there over time that they have received 100% on that management evaluation. So we're really proud of them and the, and their, you know, that all of the staff for achieving that. Lastly, environmental health, just to, you know, I'm still acting as Environmental Health Director. It has been a very, very difficult position to fill. We have received only one or two people that even meet minimum qualifications for it, and even then, there's something in there that doesn't, you know, there's, we need some solid leadership skills in that, and we're just not getting it. We took it down for a little while. We just reposted, and I worked with HR, and we're going to give it a little boost on Indeed and see how we can, see if that might draw some additional attention. Additionally, it's also posted with like the Michigan Association or Michigan Environmental Health Association, MEHA, and some of those other groups, but we'll try again. We're also going to just start looking at what other, you know, organizational capacities might be possible if we can't get anyone, because I have promised that team that we will not just put someone in there just to put someone in there as a director. We want to make sure we have the right person to, to work with that department. With that said, we had a couple successful events with the food team. The food teams worked really hard to, to work with the community on things like the Spanish Heritage Festival, those different kind of festivals where the Health Department has to be there to do temps and work with those individuals and who are sometimes state licensed but sometimes not. So there's been a lot, a lot of weekend work going into those, those different events, but they, they've worked really hard, like I said, to get, to get a process in place where we're working with the organizers ahead of time to be prepared when we go in there on who's going to be there, what they have, and do some education with them beforehand. Plan reviews was one of the things that has been brought up here at this Board, and there has been a lot of work being done on that, where our plan reviews at this point are caught up, is, as caught up as they can be. They're not, they're never going to be complete because we're always waiting on something from someone, but they're, they're caught up, and we are meeting our goal of, of communication within the first, within 30 days with each of those new, new restaurateurs, restaurantees, restaurant.
Questions for the Health Department? I, I want to, did you say? Yeah, go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the, the plan reviews, does that include people that are trying to operate food trucks?
Yes.
So all those are current at this?
Yes.
Okay.
As, as current as they can be. We have 30 days, within 30 days for a plan review, so we are meeting that criteria of getting, getting them contacted within 30 days.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I will tell you that the, the press releases with respect to pertussis and West Nile virus, I just, I cut and pasted those to my Facebook page and got some positive responses to that. So pertussis, so easily vaccinated for.
Yeah. What's, like I mentioned with that, though, I just, just reading quickly the email that was sent to me about the current case from today, it is, you know, like I said, someone that was vaccinated for it. It is kind of that waning effect that it goes off after time.
It's not 100%?
Yeah.
Good, but it's a pretty dangerous thing to get, especially for little ones. Go ahead, Tony.
Thank you. I just want to say congratulations on 100% score and the six special recognitions that you received. Congratulations for that.
Thank you. I will pass it along. They did great.
Okay, any further questions? Then the Chair will entertain a motion to receive the report. Thank you, Commissioner Bear and Commissioner Willis. All those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And now on to the claims. Everyone should have seen the claims by now. The Chair will entertain a motion to pay them. Thank you, Commissioner Snell and Commissioner Williams. All those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Please take note of the minutes from the VA meeting that are in your board packet and the reporting schedule for next month, Department on Aging, Health Department, Veterans Affairs, and Michigan Works. We're up to public comment. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Last chance for public comment. Public comment is now closed, and now committee member, committee member comments. Hearing none, we stand adjourned at the call of the Chair.